Pledge tonight will be led by Mr. Donald Jerry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Approval of the agenda. So move.
Go.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Number six.
Number six is recognition of some state designated reward school, and I've asked our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Mr. Richard Zago, to make those presentations.
Guys, it's my pleasure tonight to talk to you about some of the best parts of our school system. Before I do, I want to give you a little bit of background information. As you've read in the paper, our school system, Rutherford County School System, has been designated an exemplary school system, which is the highest designation that any school system could receive. The school systems receive those designations while schools receive slightly different designations. They range from a priority school to a reward school being the best. Priority and focus schools are designated that because they're underachieving or underperforming schools. It's my pleasure to tell you tonight, we have no school in Rutherford County that received those two designations. It is also my honor to let you know that six of our schools received the designation as a reward school. In order to be a reward school, you have to be the top 5% of achievement or the top 5% of growth. Of those six schools, the first school is John Coleman, they received this by being the top 5% of growth. Second school, Homert Pittard School, led by Dr. Bridgman. Last Cassis Elementary also in this designation received this for the top 5% of achievement. David Urey, Thurman Francis, and McFadden School of Excellence received it for both areas. They met achievement and growth in the top 5% of the state of Tennessee.
That's great. That's what we like to hear. Yeah, Don, are you going to call them out?
First one's David Urey Elementary School. Homer Pittard Campus School. Do it like the spinning bag, you know. John Coleman Elementary School. Last Cassis Elementary School. And McFadden School of Excellence. And Thurman Francis Arts Academy.
Congratulations.
It's a huge honor to be the top 5% of schools in the state of Tennessee. A significant number of schools, being the top 5% is just outstanding.
You have six out of forty-five, that's pretty good.
It is.
Congratulations to all the principals and staff and teachers and students.
Good idea to make your boss happy, too.
And parents also. Parents have so much also to do, is to join with our teachers who do the job and their administrators, but the parents that have joined with us to make all this happen.
Thanks. We don't have any visitors, so number eight.
Number eight, I've received a request from Mr. Jason Bridgman to name the Siegel High School Football Stadium in honor of former Principal Mr. Ken Nolan. Mr. Ken Nolan retired from Rutherford County Schools after being in education for thirty-nine years. During his tenure as principal at Siegel High School, he promoted a safe and successful environment while fostering collaboration among faculty. Mr. Nolan has been an avid supporter of student athletics and was an integral part of the construction of football facilities at Oakland High School and Siegel High School. The motion is to name the Siegel High School Football Stadium, the Ken Nolan Stadium. And Mr. Bridgman is here tonight to send in this request.
Welcome, Mr. Bridgman, if you want to.
I wish I would get a plaque. We kind of had hoped to kind of keep this under wraps a little bit, but it got out. That was part of the reason for us not trying to make a big presentation. We hoped that we could get approval and then maybe surprise Mr. Nolan, but that's out the bag. Friends got wind of it, so we did. I did bring along a couple of administrators and teachers who had worked with Mr. Nolan, not only all of his time at Siegel, but also with him at Oakland. And they could easily address any, I guess, questions you may have. But all of you know, Mr. Nolan has been just a staple of education in Rutherford County for quite a while. Big supporter of athletics, huge supporter of Siegel Athletics. That definitely was his baby. I can tell you, just in my time being there, I know that the kids love Mr. Nolan and Mr. Nolan loved the kids, and he absolutely loved that stadium and that football program. So we think it would be an honor and just a nice tribute on our ten-year anniversary of Siegel High School to name the stadium in his honor.
Thank you, sir. Think a motion would be in order. Can I make that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. We're happy to do this. Thanks for bringing it forward. Number nine.
This is a follow-up status reports of some previous board action. Mr. Gary Clardy will do this for us.
First thing we're going to do is look at the Sturts Creek High School. And we're making very good progress out there. It'll be ready for school this next year. We're ninety-five percent on all of our site utility. We're grading the site now, putting in curb. The area of the athletic complex is being graded. We've got curb in for the track around the field. All the geothermal wells are drilled and in. And we lack hooking up the manifolds on the four different zones, but that means that we won't have a wet site this winter like we normally have, so we'll get all of that out of the way. Brick is being put in. Block is wrapping up. We have probably twenty percent of the brick on the school. We have the main switchgear in, just putting roof on cafeteria area. And the electrical, mechanical, and fire protection is going in, and the rough end on the second floor at this time. As you can see, the brick are coming along well. We're trying to get that courtyard area out of the way so we can close that up and get it graded out. Switchgear going in, some large panels there. Cafeteria is getting ready for the heating and air conditioning stuff. You can see we have some of it in already. Downprooting the concrete block, getting ready for brick, and also putting bar joists and decking on the roof. Next week, we'll be starting some metal roof panel. Getting that dryed in. You can see the curb going in there. And then here's an aerial shot. And that would be coming from the north to the south there. That is from the northeast. You can see how large a site that is. If you look over on the right-hand side, you can see the track. We have them gravel down the track there with curb in. And then one more shot. That's coming from the west to the east. The front of the building right there in the center. So we're making great progress on that. Anyone have any questions on high school?
Any questions on that? So you're at least on schedule. You might be ahead of schedule, right? Probably don't want to say that, it'll jinx it, but.
I'd say we're on.
Have a question.
Don.
On the portion that does not have the roof, what's the time schedule on getting the roofs on that?
On the portion of what now?
On the portion that does not have the roof on it, what's the time schedule?
We will. I'd say we've already made quite a bit more progress than when these fixtures were taken. So I'd say by the end of the year, we should have all that on and be fifty percent of all the main roofing on top of that. As you can see, back in the vocational wing and over the cafeteria and stuff, we're already driving that in with roof.
That's what I was asking, right there, driving in.
So that they can get in there and work this winter. Homer Pittard Campus School is complete. We've met our obligation with MTSU and the agreement over there, plus the Addendum I of that agreement. So here's the bathroom that we've remodeled this summer. New partitions, new fixtures. The outside work that went on, on columns and front steps. There are tuck pointings all of the outside of the building, that main parapet wall up there, to keep waterproofs that. That's the new front entrance of the school. Another shot of that at a different angle. Anyone have any questions on that?
Looks great.
And then the Eagleville addition, main part of the building is complete. They're having school in that. We're now working on the outside, doing the grading and finishing up the concession stand there. And I believe on Tuesday, they're having an open house out there, so if you have an opportunity next Tuesday night, about six o'clock, stop by and take a look at it. This is the main entry from the school, the existing building to the new area. New hallway. A computer lab here. And then this is the basement of the building. And outside, they're getting ready, just about dry enough for them to put some dirt around that. Some top over with that stove. New classroom. And that splits those three projects. I know Mr., other than I spoke about, maybe sometime in the next couple of months, having a building meeting dedicated to building, to work on our building schedules and the need for the next two to five years. So I'm sure that he'll get that scheduled within the Michael's and Fuller's at some point.
Okay. Any questions for Gary?
You've had a photograph there of the basement area of Eagleville. What's the intended use of that area?
They're planning on using that for weight room, for coaches' offices, and for locker room. The current ones they have are in really bad shape, so. We managed to figure out some way to get that put in during the construction, and then they will take the booster and finish those areas out.
All right. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Number ten.
Number ten is textbook adoption for books not on the state list. Again, we have to submit a form and seek approval. Construction Department is requesting approval for local adoption of textbooks not on contract and the rules, regulations, and minimum standards for which no textbook is included in the official list of textbooks under Section 1.02 Program Selection. And the motion is for Rutherford County to request approval for local adoption of textbooks not on contract and the rules, regulations, minimum standards for which no textbook is included in the official list of textbooks under Section 1.02 Program Selection. And the following books are to be adopted for the next six years. The first two there are AP Latin books, and you asked last evening which schools did not have it. And the only two schools not teaching Latin are Holloway and Eagleville. This time, all the other high schools are still teaching Latin, but those two books we discussed. And then the second book is an AP French book.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Eleven.
This is a deductive change order for Homer Pittard Campus School. In accordance with the capital improvement agreement between Middle Tennessee State University and the Rutherford County Board of Education concerning Homer Pittard Campus School, signed and dated by Mr. Harry Gill on November the twenty-sixth, two thousand and six, and Amendment I to the agreement signed September thirteenth, two thousand and seven, the work has been completed by Hawk Mechanical on behalf of Rutherford County Schools. This final phase of the project was completed ahead of schedule and under our contract amount. The deductive change order number two to Hawk Mechanical is in the amount of nineteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. This deduct will make the final contract amount for Phase Two, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, and completes our contractual construction obligations to MTSU. The motion is to approve a deductive change order number two in the amount of nineteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars to Hawk Mechanical for the completion of Homer Pittard Campus School renovations, making the final contract amount four hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. B.
B is outdoor walking tracks at David Urey and Cedar Grove Elementary. As reported, Ms. Jenna Stitzel, at the August ninth, two thousand and twelve regular school board meeting, she has received grants for construction of pervious concrete walking tracks at some of our schools this school year. Two such benefactors are David Urey Elementary School and Cedar Grove Elementary School. A two-hundred-meter track will be constructed at these schools with the help of the Siegel Foundation and the Middle Tennessee State University at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board. The engineering and construction department will inspect the tracks during construction. And the motion is to approve construction of two-hundred-meter walking tracks of pervious concrete at David Urey Elementary School and Cedar Grove Elementary School at no cost to the board.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. C.
This is the Oakland High School Baseball Field Improvements. Principal Bill Spurlock has requested permission to make the following improvements to Oakland High School baseball facilities. Number one is a forty-fifth long by three feet high brick wall with protective netting and a nine-foot wide concrete pan, fencing along the visitors' perimeter of the field. And three, construction of a permanent ticket booth at the entrance to the facility. These suggested improvements will minimize current drainage issues and not create a Title IX or gender equity issue. The improvements will be funded by the Oakland High School Baseball Booster Club and individual donations at no cost to the board. The motion is to approve improvements to Oakland High School baseball facilities as presented at no cost to the board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. D.
D is an information piece, train renewal services update. In June of this year, a plan was approved to use train renewal services to re-warranty several aging chiller compressor systems for a period of five years. Wilson Elementary was on that list and scheduled for next year. Since a compressor failure this year at Wilson, the engineering and construction department has moved inclusion of that system ahead to this year at a cost of fifty thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. Any questions on that? Don't need to vote. Number twelve.
This is under financial matters, the school activity funds, accounts receivable and payable. Each year, the school board must approve the accounts receivable and payable for all of the school activity funds as of June thirtieth. This year's school activity fund accounts payable totaled thirty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents, and the accounts receivable, a total of one thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-three cents. These are routine items that are not ready to be settled by checks as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. For example, the Blackman High payable to Jostens was being held because the school was waiting on a credit from Jostens that needed to be applied before paying the bill. The motion is to approve the thirty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents in school activity fund accounts payable and one thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-three cents in school activity fund amounts receivable as presented.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. B.
This is capital project fund budget amendment. In the capital project fund, all open purchase orders are liquidated at the end of the fiscal year. Each year, an amendment is needed to rebudget those closed-out purchase orders from account thirty-four, six eighty-five, committed for capital projects. This year's amendment is for fifty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars, which will complete plumbing and other associated work for Homer Pittard Campus School renovation Phase Two. The motion is to amend fifty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-six from account three forty-six, eighty-five, committed for capital projects to ninety-one, three hundred dash three thirty-five, maintenance and repair service buildings as presented.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Thirteen.
Okay, and if we have people that's watching tonight, first time on TV or internet, the board has had a work session, and they have discussed these in more detail before this evening, so they know what we're talking about. First thirteen, the proposed calendar. This is recommended approval, motion to approve Rutherford County Schools' two thousand and thirteen, fourteen academic calendar as presented.
And the tabs are working tonight?
Yes, they are.
If you didn't have a chance to look last night, it looks essentially similar to this year's calendar, right? You're going to add a few half-days later on, is that right, Don? You're going to add some half-days to this?
There is some half-days that will be built in, based on our stockpile accumulated days.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. I know parents appreciate getting this early, so it's good that we got that out of the way for next year. Fourteen, Aaron sent us an email today that included the maps that this, whatever the committee is called, redistricting committee.
Yes, there's a special committee set up by the county commission for the school board and road board rezoning effort. It's important to note, as we think about this, that the redistricting committee has successfully put in place new county commission districts. And that has created twenty-one equally-sized puzzle pieces. And the circumstance really is to figure out which one, let's see, current. It's really to figure out which of those puzzle pieces to group together for the school board zones and also the road board zones. So the map that's shown right here is the current school board zones and road board zones. The redistricting committee did successfully overlay where road board zone one and school board zone one are the same. And so those represent a common area. What is challenging is doing that and adhering to some of the other redistricting criteria, one of which is that the districts be contiguous, or they be connected. And for school board zone number four, that is not the case currently. Wayne Blair's district has another district going through it there. I think, Tim, that's your district, right? So anyway, that's the challenge that this special committee got set up. I wanted to bring back to the school board and let you see that there is a leading candidate that is coming forward out of the discussion. And the discussion is by no means complete, but representing the school board on that committee, I wanted to give the school board opportunity to share with me their thoughts on what is referred to as Scenario Four, that would reconfigure those zones.
I didn't spend a lot of time with it, but I noticed they managed to put all three of our newly-elected members into the same zone.
Indeed.
So, Ms. Blankenship, welcome to the school board. I don't know how they intend to handle that. I mean, is there going to be some phase-in period before the?
They have discussed that it may be phased in in a twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen type of timeframe. They want to be sensitive to the terms and put it in line with those terms coming around. It would not be out of the question, in my view, for it to be a twenty-twenty-two adoption. Now, a twenty-twenty-two adoption would not necessarily have any explicit impact because also in twenty-twenty-two, the twenty-twenty census would be available and redistricting lines would be available. But as we see, just as a for instance, not to, you know, pull anybody out, if we look at the, let's see if I can make this work, right here, this road board member, number four, Richard Stegal. In the old districting map, we'll go back over to hit, you can see how closely it was for which zone he would be in or which district he would be in. And there may indeed be, in twenty-twenty, a similar opportunity to adjust the county commission lines, which cannot be adjusted right now. Those were set with the adoption in January of the new county commission districts, and they cannot be altered. But in twenty-twenty, they could be altered, and perhaps at that time, with a twenty-twenty-two impact, we possibly could get to something that really would adhere to the criteria. They speak of communities of interest. That's something that has been spoken of frequently, that the municipality of Laverne, Smyrna, Eagleville, and Murphysboro, that they would be represented in some compact manner. For instance, Laverne here would see about sixty-eight percent of their population in school board zone one, whereas today, Laverne is divided across three school board districts. So, you know, that's something that's being discussed. You can certainly see, you know, kind of the compact and the rational thought that is shown between those two options. But the adoption, in the face of incumbency, certainly will be a challenge. No, sir. It, it is, they, they will be, you know, for two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty, Laverne will be cut across four county commission districts.
Okay. Other comments or questions about this decision to be made? Quinn, would you guess?
It's really not a timetable. The special committee does have a nine-month lifespan, lifespan maximum. I don't think it'll take that long. Uh, I think it's notable that Commissioner Jeff Phillips is chairing the committee. I think if you have thoughts, not only share them with me, but you might reach out to Commissioner Phillips as well, uh, as, as he really has shared his wisdom, uh, there on the committee. Also, it, uh, the committee's, uh, meetings are subject to open meeting laws as well, and any school board member is welcome to come and, and attend. Uh, it has been the practice of the committee to listen, uh, when outside parties, uh, would request to, to have something to say directly to the committee.
Okay. Well, Aaron, thank you for bringing this to us. Thanks for representing us on, uh, this committee. I guess we'll see what happens. But those of you who are directly affected, I wouldn't be shy about speaking up, uh, in the near future if you have an opinion about it. Okay. Sixteen.
Do you need a?
Oh, wait, sorry. Fifteen, yeah.
Uh, fifteen is for information only. The executive committee approved on August sixteenth, two thousand and twelve, the emergency purchase of one compressor for Laverne Middle School. The bid was awarded to McQuaid with a bid of twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars to be funded from the maintenance department funds.
Questions on that? General discussion. Terry.
Uh, I do, I know, this being your last meeting and everything, I'd just like to say a couple of things, but I appreciate your service, Donalds, and Grant's. Uh, I've had, I've been thoroughly enjoying my last eight years with you, and, uh, hate to say you go, but I understand. Really appreciate all that you've done.
Now, thank you, Terry. I know we've all enjoyed it too. It's, it's been a good experience working with you fellows.
I'd like to also echo those sentiments that you've been an outstanding, uh, board chair, and, uh, you know, we've thrived under your leadership, and we've all gotten along, and we've always agreed, but we've always acted as one board, so thank you for your leadership. Uh, I've known, uh, Donald Jernigan, I think, forty-two, forty-three years, and, uh, I enjoyed your leadership when I was a child, and certainly. Certainly as a man, uh, on this board, but, uh, you certainly, the, the wisdom. I will tell you one thing, when I was at Thurman Francis, I, I was hell-bent on not getting a, a, a padling from this man, because I'd heard stories, so that's, that's why I was such a good kid, so. But again, thank you for your service. Mr. Kelly, uh, what, twenty years on the, uh, commission, uh, two terms here, uh, thank you for your service, uh, to this county and our children. Uh, we've, uh, we've, we've had a great, we've had a great run. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
I wanted to weigh in as well. The wisdom that Mr. Donald Jernigan has shared with me over the past two years, uh, I certainly hope will not end. Uh, I value his friendship immensely, and, uh, to sit beside Grant Kelly and, uh, hear the whispers from time to time, uh, is a, a special treat, and, uh, I sure have enjoyed being, being here with you, Grant, and, uh, you helping me to get settled into the board. And, uh, Dr. Burns, the, uh, counsel that you have given from time to time, uh, I, I truly appreciate, and thank you all three for the efforts that you've made, uh, on behalf of education here.
Thank you, Aaron. Appreciate that.
Well, I certainly need to weigh in as well. It's been a, it's been a really good two years. Uh, I, I've enjoyed the, the two years of relationship professionally with this. Uh, we've, we've had, uh, other relationships through the, through the years, but, uh, the public service, a few three people have given to Rutherford County needs to be acknowledged, and hope the general public recognizes that, and wish you well, and I'm sure you'll be here for the next board meeting, won't you?
I, I imagine I might watch it on TV.
Streaming.
I'll check out the YouTube, uh, version of it. Can fast-forward through certain comments, that one. But thank, thank you, Tim. Uh, Donald Grant, do you have anything you want to say, or, uh, not?
I, I just appreciate the opportunity to get served, uh, for eight years on the school board, and I will look back, uh, my, and funny as time slips away, uh, for me, it is, as Wayne has already pointed out, a number of years, forty-plus, and, uh, and I've certainly enjoyed, I can say truthfully, I've enjoyed every year of it, being a part of Rutherford County Education.
Thank you, Don.
Grant.
Again, echo what he says, and, uh, being a part of, of a great, uh, county, and, and we continue to, as shown tonight, by a lot of accolades they've gotten, uh, we continue to lead the way, and, and I think, uh, some of these folks here have wanted to help these, and I'm glad to be a part of the team.
Well, me too. It's been a great experience. We've had, uh, a good eight years, and I think that's a signal that it's time for us to leave.
As MTSU.
Sure, yeah. We got fifteen minutes before kickoff. I was in the middle of a heartfelt, uh, totally lost my train of thought.
Things happen.
In any event, it's been a great experience, and, uh, enjoyed working with the, with, uh, the board members and the staff, even James, um, Ms. Michaels, Mr. Gill, so it's been, it's been a great run, and it's all about the kids, and so we're happy to try that to help a little bit.
Before you strike that gavel a final time, could we make a presentation too?
Certainly.
Kind of with my back to you, but we're gonna play to the audience tonight and the people on television and all if we can. One question you did ask last evening about our enrollment of thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty, did check today, we have two hundred and twenty preschool students also, it's not counted in that K through twelve total, so that makes forty thousand, one hundred and forty, really, and there will be a few more that serve by special aid also. But, uh, I do want to say a word or two tonight, as we begin, about this particular board and the three gentlemen that are be leaving us after tonight. This board, in their last eight years, has successfully opened seven new schools and completed additions or renovations to twelve existing facilities. They secured funding for the first new high school since two thousand and three. They established Central Middle School as the county's newest magnet school, and the only one that included a high school. They successfully launched an international Becca Art program at Oakland High School. All county school students now have a true middle school option thanks to the aggressive campaign by the school board many years ago. Um, Rutherford County adopted a grade sequence of K through five, six through eight, and nine through twelve, and under your tenure, we're able to attain that now to where students are, can attend a school that's a truly a middle school, not attached to an elementary school somewhere only. The board has navigated the district during a period of explosive growth. Enrollment has increased by nearly nine thousand students in the past eight years. That's phenomenal growth. And at the time all of this is going on, our district has maintained some of the highest performance indicators in the state during the past eight years. You know, it's just, it's, to go out with an exemplary district and six reward schools like this evening, but I do want you to know that your contributions make this happen, it, along with the teachers, and you oversee our budget, you recommend our programs, and the feedback from you, from my time working you in instruction and other areas, you, you have certainly contributed with, no small contribution to where we are today. But we also have some presentations to make. I, I would like to, and, um, first one, Mr. Grant Kelly, could you come up here just a moment, please, sir? You will? And I've, I've known Mr. Kelly for a, a number of years, and I think you served on the commission, you served, you still serve, I believe, on the workout boards.
Yeah, a couple of them.
Okay. And certainly the school board, but Mr. Kelly and I got to know each other when our daughters competed in softball a number of years ago.
They are prevailing.
But again, Mr. Kelly is one of those that really paid attention to his constituents and the people of the community, and he was one of those sounding boards to us. So, um, when I was in instruction or other times, you might get a call from Mr. Kelly and say, hey, this is going around, something's been said about this, do you know about it? Will you check into it? And I can tell you, as, as a director of schools, or in instruction, or any of those positions, you do not want to be the last to know. So I appreciate the many times that you ask, know, or something that you've heard or seen that sometimes was even a rumor, but this is presented, uh, to Mr., appreciation of Grant Kelly, member of the Rutherford County School Board, September the first, two thousand and four, to August thirty-first, two thousand and twelve, for your unselfish devotion and service on the teachers, students, and citizens of our county. And each of the board members, uh, name is also on the back. Congratulations.
Thanks, Terry.
Other, Mr. Donald Jernigan, and I too have known Mr. Jernigan probably forty years, uh, something like that, um, as an educator and as a principal, we served together in the, in the Smyrna area, um, I, and I can truly say that as, as you talk to people in this community, the one word that's said about Donald Jernigan, whatever he gives you is his word, you can count on. You could, could always bank on it, and that's a compliment, a real compliment, you know, when you stop and think about it. But I notice something else that's really interesting here, and, and Don kind of earned the reputation, and may have not a lot of words, but what's most interesting to me is I was sitting over there, and sitting here now, when Mr. Jernigan spoke, all of you turned and listened to what he had to say, and the audience, so, um, respect again for you. Congratulations, and it says also, in appreciation of Donald Jernigan, member of Rutherford County Board of Education, September the first, two thousand and four, to August thirty-first, two thousand and twelve, for your unselfish devotion and service to the teachers, students, and citizens of our county. Thank you, Mr. Jernigan. And our last one's Dr. Mark Burns. And I've known you at least ten of all, but some, I've known some of these others longer than your age. But, but I really have appreciated knowing, uh, Dr. Burns and getting to know him, especially as chairman of the board, he's, of course, a dean at MTSU. And as I, I did tell him earlier in the week, I got to speak with, uh, Dr. McPhee, and I recognize, and Dr. McPhee also recognized your skills and leadership. Uh, he commented to me about that, and I certainly concurred with that. Um, to, as you conducted the meetings, you were able to keep us on track and on topic, uh, for the discussion that was done. Um, you're just an outstanding board chairperson, and I thank you for that. Yours also says, presented by the Rutherford County Board of Education, and it is in appreciation for Dr. Mark Burns, member of the Rutherford County Board of Education, September the first, two thousand and four, to August thirty-first, two thousand and twelve, for your unselfish devotion and service to the teachers, students, and citizens of our county. Congratulations. Thank you, Mark. I'm not exactly sure if a dean needs the gavel or not, but you might. But in appreciation again for your service as our board chair, Rutherford County School Board. Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Hard to top that. Thank you very much, Don and Joyce, and everybody for that. We appreciate that very much. So with that, we are adjourned.